I'd like to call this meeting of the City Council together at 7:03.
And Counselor Hendricks is absent, six present.
We'll now stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Special announcements of the day. Vice President Levy.
Thank you, good evening. Chief, or want to join me? City of Beloit, Wisconsin official proclamation, whereas the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime prevention and community safety program on August 2nd, 2016 entitled National Night Out, and whereas the 33rd Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the City of Beloit to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting community policing and crime prevention efforts, and whereas the Beloit Police Department, Beloit Area Crime Stoppers and the Beloit Fire Department play a vital role in collaborating with our community to reduce crime, fear, and disorder and increase crime prevention efforts in Beloit, Wisconsin, and are supporting National Night Out locally, and whereas it is essentially that all citizens of Beloit be aware of the importance of crime prevention and community policing programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, fear, and disorder in Beloit. And whereas police community sponsored partnerships, neighborhood safety awareness and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program, and whereas the City of Beloit has been chosen to host the countywide National Night Out event with the Rock County Sheriff's Office to further promote both law enforcement and community partnerships. Now therefore, the City Council President of the City of Beloit does hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 2nd, 2016 as National Night Out in Beloit, and encourages residents to acknowledge the event with their neighbors by attending the countywide event at Riverside Park, hosting block parties, cookouts, youth programs, and other such activities that strengthen and promote neighborhood spirit and police community partnerships presented this 18th day of July, 2016, David F. Lupke, President, Beloit City Council. And if I may add, with in light of everything that's going on in the country, I would like to encourage all the citizens to please come out, and this is a great opportunity to partner with the law enforcement, get to know them on a community level, and get to know them personally to find, to see what they're all about, and they can see what the communities are about, but I think it's important at this time and history and things that's going on in the world that we come together as Beloit citizens and also the Beloit Police Department and Fire Department, come together and just show the rest of the world what a great city we have, and that we can be an example for everyone to follow. So with that, I present this to Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, and I'll just quickly echo Councilman Levy's comments, at no better time, actually this is coming up at a very good time. Beloit is unique in terms of, I think we're not caught in the, while we appreciate what's happening nationally, our community and our department is standing on its own in terms of building our relationships, keeping our community safe, and at the same time keeping our officers safe. So I think it'll be an important event at Riverside, having that countywide event is going to really be a lot to do for the kids. I would encourage our Beloit community to come down there, there's all kinds of activities. In addition, we'll still have our neighborhood, individual neighborhood block parties that will be occurring, approximately eight to 10 of those I believe we have applications for, so we'll have our traditional little neighborhood group get togethers, as well as that large event at Riverside. I think there's plenty of time for everyone to enjoy all of those and get to meet law enforcement and fire professionals and build those relationships. We'll also be debuting our baseball cards at the Neighborhood Night Out, so all the officers can hand out their cards and we'll see who has the most card value, I don't know, trade value, right? So, I don't know, they could end up in a store tomorrow, but in any event, thank you for the proclamation and look forward to seeing everyone out there.
Thank you, Chief. Public hearings.
We have a public hearing and resolution modifying the use of the Community Housing Development Organization funds under the 2014 and 15 home program.
Ms. Christensen.
For the 2014 program year, $71,981.55 is available for CHODO activities, and for the 2015 program year, $65,238.60 is available, although you changed the future allocations, the 14 and 15 money still are to be used in the City of Beloit, although those dollars are contracted with the consortium with the lead agency being Janesville, they do let us have a voice in how those funds are spent. When we budgeted for those in 14 and 15, or the year before, we thought purchase rehab is what we would want to do, that we would want to continue with that program with NHS, but what we're finding is we have a number of vacant lots, of which the CDA actually picked one up from Rock County in our West Side Target area, which there's a map of in the packet, so we think that there is a need and desire to do new construction. For this particular project, we're thinking new construction at 340 Highland, that was one of the lots we looked at when we did our tour. We, right now NHS and Community Action are both busy with projects, and so lucky for Rock County, the Wisconsin Housing Partnership stepped up and got certified as a CHODO in Rock County, so have an opportunity to do a project with a new agency. And so because you originally budgeted them for the use of purchase rehab, you have to actually take action to use it for a different use, so we're proposing the use of new construction. And we did meet with Community Action and NHS to share with them what we were proposing to do, and NHS has expressed willingness to take the lot next door to it to the west and divide it in half so that this lot will be a little larger, and then their lot will be, where they're rehabbing at 354 Highland, will be a little larger because we're always trying to reduce density in that target area, so it's on your agenda to modify the use of funds to new construction.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so if anybody from the public would like to speak, now is the time to step forward. First call. Second call for anyone who'd like to speak. Third and final call. And it'll close the public hearing, is there a motion? Motion by Levy?
Second.
Second by Duncan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Next on the agenda is citizens' participation, citizens are encouraged to step forward, like you to limit your words to three minutes or less, and please be respectful in your speech. Anybody in the audience who'd like to speak at this time, step forward. Second call. Third and final call. That'll close the citizens' participation, consent agenda. All items to be voted on in the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member saw requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point in the agenda. Would anybody like anything removed? Counselor DeForest.
Thank you, I'd like to request item D, as a dog, be removed, please.
Item D. But anybody else? Item D, so that means the consent agenda would consist of A, B, C, E, F, G, H, I, and J. Is there a motion?
I make the motion to approve.
Motion by Duncan, second by Slaniker, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes 6-0. Item D.
Item D is a resolution approving the change of agent for Fiesta Cancun Authentic Mexican Restaurant of Beloit, doing business as Fiesta Cancun Mexican Restaurant. It's located at 2648 Prairie Avenue from Jose Cortez to Jennifer Dominguez. The alcohol committee has recommended this for approval, 7-0, the recommended agent is present tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counselor DeForest.
Thank you, I don't know if it would be appropriate to go ahead and ask the agent these questions, I was concerned with the brevity of her response to several of the questions in regard to how she will make sure, ensure that there's compliance with the staff at this establishment to make sure they're following the rules.
Okay. Jennifer, would you be coming up to the podium?
Ms. Dominguez, could you please give your name and your address?
Jennifer Dominguez, 100 Berkeley Road, Apartment 8, Verona, Wisconsin.
Thank you.
Thank you, could you inform us of how you will ensure that the staff on site will be following the law?
Well, I would make sure that they go through the proper procedures of learning what is right and not right, and then the managers on duty will have, sorry, the managers on duty will have, they will also make sure that they're following the rules and the laws of what needs to be done and not done.
Okay, are you familiar with the laws?
I've read through them, yeah.
You've read through, I'm sorry, what was that?
The laws of, like, through the, going through the agent and the bartending license? Yeah, I've done that, yeah.
Okay, and what kind of training would be provided to the staff?
Well, I want them to do the training that I went through, like the bartending learn to serve, and go through the documentations that they need to do that.
Okay, and how will you verify that they've done that?
They have to give me the certification, and I have to turn it in to here.
Okay, and then you had stated in response to the question about your presence at the restaurant to spot check compliance, you said that you would try to be there?
Like, three to four days a week.
Okay, so does that mean you will be there three or four days a week to spot check?
I plan on being there three to four days a week, if not more, yeah.
Okay, and do you have a plan for how you will spot check to make sure there's compliance?
By driving down and being there? Is that what you mean by spot checking? Like, I would visually go and check on the place and be there.
Will you check alcohol purchasing receipts?
Oh, yeah.
Will you check, I need more than just going to be there.
To go through all of that, yes. The receipts and everything of what is being purchased?
Okay, yes, and what else will you be doing?
Going every, over everything that I need to be, going through the license, going through the receipts and what's being purchased and not purchased, making sure that they're following what they need to follow.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I have a quick question, just a quick question. For the training of the employees, and let's say that once the training is completed, they get a certificate and submit it, and they do sell to underage person, is there any consequences set up for them, or what will happen?
Oh, well, they're probably going to get fired. Yeah, so they're also going to have probably legal actions if they do that, they're going to, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Counselor Marshall.
Thanks for coming tonight, I really appreciate that. As Sheila mentioned, the brevity of your answers on the form is not entirely your fault, from what I understand, it's a, our form is not the most, you know, clear and obvious thing to work through, but I just want to understand that you understand the responsibility you're taking as an agent under this license.
Yes.
Okay, and that you fully understand the ramifications of that?
Yes, I do.
Okay, I just wanted to be assured of that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to add.
Ms. Duncan.
I just wanted to add, I just wanted to add that I had went into the business myself unannounced and got a tour of it and was very impressed, and I just thank you for bringing your business here to Beloit.
You're welcome, thank you.
That's all, thank you very much. I'm sorry. Counselor Slaniker.
I also visited and I spoke with Miguel at Great Lakes, and he was very thorough with his answers, sat down and talked to me, I came in unannounced as well, and it's a nice restaurant.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess that's it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Levy to approve, second by Duncan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Passes five to one. Ordinances.
There's a proposed ordinance to amend Section 18.02 Sub 4A of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit pertaining to animals and parks, this is first reading, and suspending the rules for a second reading.
Chief Sabowski.
Good evening, I bring this to you in furtherance of our Neighborhood Night Event at Riverside, we're asking for the ability to allow two horses in the event, it's a regular horse and a small pony, they're just going to be doing little ball tricks, there is very little, if any, possibility that it'll affect the grass, when they did this last year in Clinton, there was no damage to the grass, nothing like that, it's not pony rides or anything of that, and the ordinance change just gives the Parks Director the opportunity to approve or deny some of these types of requests.
We're just talking about two animals, is that right, Chief?
Correct.
A horse and a pony, and they usually put the hay down or something like that?
They don't, and this is because he's just rolling a ball, they're not going to put anything down, and they didn't in their previous events, and they've had no damage to the grass because there's no jumping or running or riding in circles kind of activity.
Okay, questions for Chief? Mr. Levy?
Just a couple of questions, are we just looking at doing these for a special events, and if so, do we need to spell that out in ordinance? I guess, right now it could be not an issue, but in two or three years from now, someone may want to do more than horses, and are we going to see a big change to this ordinance going down the road, do we need to be proactive now, or?
What, the reason the ordinance is drafted the way it is, is there are several different ordinance that basically said it, discretion of the Parks Director, so I tried to keep it consistent with that by just leaving it up to the discretion of the Parks Director, so if this council would like more detailed information in the ordinance, as we certainly can do so, I was just trying to be consistent with what was there. Mr. Ramsey did indicate to me that he, that he was excited about the opportunity for it, apparently there had maybe been some requests in the past, and I believe Mr. Ramsey is a very strong advocate of making sure that the parks are kept in a presentable fashion, and would do everything and utter his authority to make sure that these were limited special events, community wide events, rather than just individual.
Yeah, and I don't necessarily have a problem with it, but I just didn't know if we're just looking at doing it for special events that need to be spelled out in the ordinance, or if the line that you added will cover that, you know, do we get, if someone comes and wants just a Saturday afternoon horse ride in the park, I'm just thinking, may that ever happen, but.
Well, the council through the authority of the city manager certainly has the day-to-day responsibilities over the Parks Director, so if you wanted to limit his authority in that respect, we could do that administratively and not in the ordinance, but again, if the council liked to see something different in the ordinance, we can certainly do that.
As written, this does provide us with additional flexibility, so if there were a special request that, as, I'm having a difficult time thinking exactly what it might be, but if an individual had a request that, I'm trying to think, there have been birthday parties, for example, where perhaps a 4-H club was going to bring rabbits to display something along those lines, presuming that they fall under the definition of a domesticated farm animal, that might be acceptable for some special purpose that might not be a citywide special event, so there may be circumstances under which this would be permissible, but clearly we need to address in the parks for safety purposes, just to make sure that we aren't allowing animals running rampant.
Thank you. Any other questions? Chief? Thank you, Chief. Thank you.
President Lupke, I should note that there are several Rock County ordinances and things like that related to the care of animals and things like that, that they do have to be kept in a certain fashion, sanitizing equipment, things like that, so there are rules outside of their ordinances that deal with some quality of life type issues for the park.
Thank you.
So do we need to have that spelled out, or no?
No. Party there.
I move to suspend the rules, and.
First, second reading? Motion by Pressul to suspend the rules, is there a second?
I have a second.
Second by DeForest, all in favors?
One last question.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I mean, it seems like something simple, but I just, in moving forward, I always want to make sure we have everything ironed out before, so as far as any cleanup or anything, the person that brings the horses to any park, they're responsible for all of that, and is that understood, is that told to them when they come, is that something that we need, I just try to keep things as tight as possible.
Right, because this is something new, I mean, I can imagine that we would put all the onerous on the person that's bringing the livestock to the parks to make sure that they do all the setup and all the cleanup after that, the Parks Director does have the authority to set the rules and restrictions however he sees fit with regard to allowing the animals in the parks.
I'm sure Mr. Ramsey will be very diligent about that.
And I'm sure, I just don't, I guess I would hate to just see it as a word of mouth thing, because they can always say, well, he didn't know, I mean.
They'd have to apply for written permission from the Parks Director to get, you know, to be allowed to do this, so if anybody's talking about it, I'm hoping that they're talking about getting a permit or some kind of permission to go and allow the animals in the park, and it is written as written permission from the Parks Director.
Okay.
Based on our tour of the parks last weekend, we were impressed. Counselor DeForest.
Thank you, and I think given the diligence of the Parks and Rec Commission, that they will be on top of it if they feel like there's, you know, damage to the parks or not proper cleanup, so that's nice that we have that body providing some oversight and direction to the Parks Director.
Thank you. We have a motion, second, to suspend the rules, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass 6-0. Is there a motion on the?
I'll move on the merits.
Motion is made by DeForest, second, second by Pressul, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 6-0. Okay, appointments.
So under the appointments tonight, the individuals named below have been nominated for seat on the City Board, Committee, or Commission, each nomination subject to confirmation by the City Council, approval of appointments will be accomplished by one motion unless a council member requests to take up a nomination separately. Tonight's appointments include two, to the Board of Appeals, we have Willis Zick replacing Gregory Gall to a term ending May 31st, 2018, and John Peterson replacing Willis Zick as first alternate, ending May 31st, 2017.
We need a motion on that?
Yes.
Move by Levy, second by Duncan, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 6-0. Next, Counselor, activities and upcoming events, Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. Well, first of all, it was my pleasure to attend the wet down and pushback ceremony of our two new fire engines, that was quite a joy to be there, to experience, and I'd like to especially thank the apparatus team, this was made up of our firefighters themselves who provided input into the kind of rigs they wanted, so I really appreciate Chief Liggett's involvement of the staff in helping to make the decision about the fire engines that were purchased, and they're certainly engines that we can be proud of in the city. I attended a LULAC meeting, which is a league for United Latin American Citizens, I attended music at Harry's Place on Friday, Dave, I saw you there and tried to say hello, but you were leaving, I was trying to grab you, it was a beautiful night, wonderful turnout, we've just really been fortunate with beautiful weather Friday nights this season, so I hope it continues, I hope I didn't just jinx it, so obviously, I just want to make sure the whole community knows those are free music concerts every Friday night at Harry's Place, and so please come down, they're a great way for the community to come together. I attended the Summer Slam Jam at Riverside Park just yesterday, there's a lot of fun things at Riverside Park going on, and just wanted to encourage my colleagues to consider attending the Fire Ops on September 10th, it's on a Saturday, and this is an opportunity to kind of learn what it's like to be a firefighter for a day, I've done this before when I first came on council seven or eight years ago, and it was a really good experience for me to understand, a little glimpse through the eyes of a firefighter, what that's like for them, it's in Milwaukee, I'm happy to give you a ride if you want to go with me, I think it would show great support to our men and women if we could participate and show them that we're trying to understand what their jobs are like and how demanding, you know, we ask, the duties we ask of them. And then also, I would like to encourage the community's participation, Unity in the Community is coming up this weekend, on this Saturday, from 12 to 5, so hope you can come out for that, and then August 2nd, of course, is National Night Out, one of my favorite events in the city all year, and looking forward to meeting with many of the residents and seeing you down at Riverside Park for the countywide National Night Out, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Slaniker.
I had the pleasure of being on the Parks Tour and seeing all the West Side Parks that are very beautiful and well capped up, and then also attended the workshop that we had last Monday, which was on Lake Falls and will be in the city forward.
Thank you. Counselor Duncan.
First, along with my colleagues, I attended a strategic planning meeting at the Engineering and Utilities Building, we discussed potential plans for 2016 to 18, this meeting also consisted of the City Department heads, more and more, I'm impressed by the talented staff that we have on our team, together we are creatively coming up with ways to make the City of Beloit even better. Also, I went over to the transit facility, I had a chance to tour the building and check out some of our city buses and the guys that work on them, I talked with Michelle Gavin, who is the Director of Transit, and James Thompson, who is the Transit Supervisor, they are doing a lot to get our citizens from place to place, you wouldn't believe the work that goes into that, I am looking forward to going back early next month, and will be touring at the wastewater treatment plant, too. On Saturday, I worked with BIF, the Beloit International Film Festival, to show a movie at the Merrill Community Center, it was well attended with many children and families from the neighborhood and throughout the City of Beloit, we watched the Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles and had popcorn, a special thank you to BIF, Greg Girard, Ron Neef, and their staff for helping us to make this happen, many of the residents expressed how thankful they were to be able to see a movie outdoors on a big screen, everyone felt safe and had a good time, hopefully this effort will just be a start and that more people want to be engaged in seeing films downtown from the festival, for the festival. And speaking of safe, in promoting the movie, I walked the Merrill neighborhood to ensure that people knew about it, it was great that Chief Sabowski offered to tag along with me to make contact with some of the neighbors, we had a chance to have dialogue with residents, and we met the owner of the Keeler Store. While we were walking, I also observed other officers from the Beloit Police Department and from the Rock County Sheriff's Department working patrol in the area, in light of all that is going on in our nation, our law enforcement is still managing, they're still managing to do their job, I am thankful to each of them for their sacrifices that they make to keep our city safe, let's keep in mind that police officers are human, and that it's okay to reach out and give them a hug. And I want to once again give special thanks to Scotty Davidson, Brian Elliott, Jerry Kenny, Martha Cotter, Terry Hopper, and the numerous volunteers that are working with our youth at Turtle Creek Park, who are playing softball, as well as the School District of Beloit, and our Parks and Leisure Department for all their assistance in making this possible, it does take a village to raise a child. Also, deepest sympathy to Mark Prashil, Regina Hendricks, Kevin Levy, Barbara Hickman, and their families, and to all others in our community that are experiencing loss, you have our heartfelt condolences.
Thank you, Regina. Counselor Pressul.
I'm going to be brief. I'm going to be very brief, I just want to say, I was at the last listening session for the Beloit Police Department at Brother Dutton, well, actually ended up in the parish basement, and it's really good to see everybody show, there was a really good turnout, a lot of Hispanic, it was a dual language session, and I have to compliment the Chief in light of everything that's been going on in the news lately, the Chief and the officers that came up with it, the idea of the guardianship or the guardians policing initiative, I'm going, I like it better than cops, I just like, the concept resonates, it's an inspired idea, it's an inspiring idea, and to be guardians is so much more than being just a cop or being just a police officer or detective, it means so much more, and I really appreciate, I'm really glad we're ahead of the game, and I really, I want you to tell all your officers that, too. So that's it for my soapbox tonight, and thank you for your condolences, everybody, thank you.
Vice President Levy.
If we could have everyone put on their calendars on August 24th, that's on a Wednesday night, beginning at 5:30, till about 8:30 or however long, in lieu of everything that is going on in the world, kind of going on what we talked about earlier, having Beloit be the example to show other cities what we want to do, I had the opportunity to reach out to Pastor Pullum from Emmanuel Baptist Church, Pastor Ivy from New Zion, and our own Chief, to do a town hall meeting, to have, as I call it, a courageous conversation, and the three of those individuals jumped at this opportunity, talking with them, and I also talked to the city manager, and she was like, I think this would be a wonderful idea, I could tell that those individuals had already started thinking about doing something like this already, so we are inviting the entire community to come out, and we're going to have that, you know, courageous conversation, we're having it now in a lot of homes, I have a lot of nephews.
I have a lot of nephews and cousins who's asking me now, well, if I get stopped by the police, what should I do? The common answer is, well, just do what the police says. To them, they're saying, but we're seeing people do that. So what better way to have those answers, those questions answered, but have our chief and some of his... He's committed to have some of his staff there to address those issues, because we have our youth of the city wanting to know, what can we do? How can we work with the police to let them know that we support them, they support us? But if we get into a situation, whether the broken taillight or whatever, what can we do to make sure that things are working out the way that they should? So I commend everyone who volunteered to step up, I'm looking forward to this. We're going to publicize it a little bit more as we get closer to that date, but we're going to ask everyone to please come forward, let's have a nice conversation, and let the world see what Beloit can do. So once again, thanks to the chief and to those two pastors, and I'm looking forward to this great event. Start at, like I said, 5:30 with a light meal, but after that, we'll go right into the town hall meeting about 6 o'clock. So those of you that are not doing anything, it's going to be at New Zion Baptist Church. That's on 1905 Mound Avenue in Beloit, right off of Bayless, so thank you.
Thank you. Everybody's stated our activities, I'll just add and reiterate, Counselor Prashil lost his father just a couple days ago. Counselor Hendricks just found out today that her grandfather passed away, and again, a good friend of the community and longtime booster, Barb Pickman's daughter, passed away, and so these are all, again, things that weigh on us. I want to mention also, I was with Counselor Prashil at the listening session at Brother Dutton on that hot day where they moved it from Dutton to the church hall basement, and I think the majority of the people there were Hispanic, and we had a couple interpreters, and the most touching point to me was at the very end during the question and answers, I was very pregnant, a lady put her hand up and asked, is it okay? She asked this to the chief, is it okay if we wave at you? Chief said, you can come up and hug me if you want, or whatever, but, you know, this is how we're breaking down walls and barriers. It was just, you know, I was so used to the first hour or so, but that the question and answers really show some... Show what our community is all about, so that we're making inroads. That's all I have. We'll go on to the city manager's presentation.
There is none this evening.
Okay. Reports from the boards and officers?
We have a resolution approving 2017 Community Development Block Grant Local Funding Priorities.
Ms. Christensen.
We receive limited CDBG dollars, so we want to make the best use of our funds, and we think the best way to do that is to set local funding priorities. So at your last meeting, you held a public hearing to hear some of the needs in the community, and those, summary of those are listed in the staff report. We took this funding priority resolution to CDA, and they made a recommendation which is included... The priorities are included in your resolution, also on Attachment A, which is, the recommendation is to prioritize public service programs which focus on comprehensive case management strategies with priority given to neighborhood stabilization activities, education and budgeting and life skills, and employment training that corresponds with local employment opportunities, and then code enforcement, housing rehabilitation, economic development activities with priority given to technical job training, program administration, and fair housing. And CDA did unanimously recommend these funding priorities. And then if approved, or whatever the funding priorities are that are approved, will be included in the CDBG application, and that CDBG application will be sent out very shortly to the funding agencies, and then we will revisit these funding priorities next year, the ones that we have. But then, when the CDA actually makes their recommendation, we'll remind them of those funding priorities as they make their funding recommendations to the council.
Thank you. I should have mentioned before that Counselor Duncan had to recuse herself because her agency, where she's manager, receives funds. Counselor Prashil.
As the council rep on the CDA, I want to make clear that the list is not in any sort of order. It's not... There's not a top priority, there's not a... All these are equal. I prefer seeing a bullet list, quite frankly, just anything to not give the impression that we're, you know, we're prioritizing one of these items over another. I just want to make that clear.
We just put them in the order that they are on the table when we give you the budget, so that's why they're in that order.
Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I'm glad to see focused, narrow priorities, everybody has been asking for this, and I really hope that the CDA takes these to heart when they make the decision about how to award funding. One area that I was surprised to not see on here was anything related to addressing homelessness or rental assistance, and so the CDA has decided not to include that as a funding priority, is that correct?
They didn't discuss adding it at all.
That's quite a shocker. So I guess this will be even more leverage for me, that when the funding recommendations come back from CDA, that they will truly be related to case management, employment training, housing rehab, fair housing. I mean, I... This is a very short, narrow list, and I want to make sure that if we're approving these, that the CDA understands this is what we'll be looking for from them in terms of funding, so I just wanted to communicate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just... I don't need to speak. I was just making sure that Counselor Duncan's abstention was noted for the record, because she had left.
Thank you, thank you. Counselor Slaniker.
I just have a question in regards to the case management. Are there, like, specific things that they have to document in order to comply?
Yeah, they would have to document in their quarterly reports that they're doing case management, and they would have to explain in their application how they will be providing case management. But then, in the quarterly report, you have to report what activities you're doing, and so you'd have to explain how you're meeting that, and then Terry monitors mid-year, and then you'd have to show how you had met that funding priority.
Okay, thank you.
Any else? Thank you. That was more for information. We don't need a motion on that? We do need a motion, okay?
There's a resolution.
Okay, is there a motion? Move by DeForest, second by Slaniker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Six-zero, it passes.
Five-zero with one abstention.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you. Somebody has to be a guardian to me.
Might miss adjournment, right?
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
We're just adjourning.
Okay.
I hope you're careful on the steps. Sorry.